You can go over there, honey, it's okay. Where are you going? Leave your stuff down. No, he's not gonna take your seat.
We'll be on the news like no one's seen us.
I know. Okay, I'm sorry. It's okay. He's gonna move.
Oh, you're like, yes, man.
Everybody up. Do you want to go? Social move? Okay. Just make the exact right decision. We're gonna scoot everybody up a little bit. It wasn't a case of all problems.
The dictator of Tomania, the conqueror of Ostrovich, the future emperor. Would speak. The God must solemnly offer. I'm sorry. I don't want to be an emperor. That's not my business. I don't want to rule or conquer anyone. I should love to help everyone if possible. True, Gentiles, black men, white. We all want to help one another. Human beings are like that. We want to live by each other's happiness, not by each other's misery. We don't want to hate and despise one another. In this world, there's room for everyone. Good earth is rich. And can provide for everyone. A way of life could be free and beautiful. We have lost the way. Greed has poisoned men's souls. Has barricaded the world with hate. Has goose-stepped us into misery and bloodshed. We have developed speed, but we have shut ourselves in. Machinery that gives abundance has left us in want. Our knowledge has made us cynical. Our cleverness hard and unkind. We think too much, feel too little. More than machinery, we need humanity. More than cleverness, we need kindness and gentleness. Without these qualities, life will be violent. And all will be lost. The airplane and the radio have brought us closer together. The very nature of these inventions cries out for the goodness of men. Cries out for universal brotherhood and the unity of us all. Even now, my voice is reaching millions throughout the world. Millions of despairing men, women, and children. Hittens of a system that makes men torture and imprison innocent people. For those who can hear me, I say, do not despair. The misery that is now upon us is but the passing of greed. The bitterness of men who fear the way of human progress. The hate of men will pass, and dictators die. And the power they took from the people will return to the people. And so long as men die, liberty will never perish. Soldiers, don't give yourselves to brutes. Men who despise you, enslave you, who regiment your lives, tell you what to do, what to think, and what to feel. Who drill you, dive you, treat you like cattle, use you as cannon fodder. Don't give yourselves to these unnatural men. Machine men with machine minds and machine hearts. You are not machines. You are not cattle. You are men. You have the love of humanity in your hearts. You don't hate, only the unloved hate. The unloved and the unnatural. Soldiers, don't fight the slavery, fight for liberty. In the seventeenth chapter of St. Luke is written, "The kingdom of God is within man, not one man nor a group of men." But in all men, in you, you, the people, have the power. The power to create machines, the power to create happiness. You, the people, have the power to make this life free and beautiful, to make this life a wonderful adventure. Then in the name of democracy, let us use that power. Let us all unite. Let us fight for a new world. A decent world that will give men a chance to work, that will give you the future and a way to security. By the promise of these things, brutes have risen to power. But they lie. They do not fulfill that promise. They never will. Dictators free themselves, but they enslave the people. Now let us fight to fulfill that promise. Let us fight to free the world, to go away with national barriers, to go away with greed, with hate and intolerance. Let us fight for a world of reason. A world where science and progress will lead to all men's happiness. Soldiers, in the name of democracy, let us all unite.
Yeah!
Welcome. Before I begin, I have to say one thing. Just because someone looks like a dictator, doesn't mean they are. Charlie Chaplin, the greatest showman the world has ever known, known for his silent films, decided to break character and spoke on the big screen for the first time to say that. The truth. To call out the brutes in favor of the downtrodden and the helpless. That same speech right there is what inspired me to stay true to my heart and to my dream of saving this city. You all came here for a show, right? I'm gonna give you one. This meeting is now called to order. All please rise to pledge allegiance. But please don't pledge allegiance to a flag. Put this book right here, the Constitution of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing while we say a prayer, sorry. Tonight, Abram Crozier, Phalath's chaplain, will be the one to bless this meeting, and for good reason. Abram has inspired me with his words, his ways, and his works. He is a doer, a leader. And if the bring-court top meet anything about leadership, is that the best way to lead is by example. And if any of you think I am leading you astray, know that this man will not. Follow this man. Stay close to God and find a church that loves you. Let's pray.
Very gracious Father, God, we're so thankful for this glorious day you've given us. You tell us in your word that this is the day that you have made. We're supposed to be glad and rejoicing at, God, and I just pray for that today. God, as our council members do the business of our community here today, God, I just pray for strength, for courage, for wisdom, for discernment, God. And more than anything, God, I pray for unity. There's so many great people in this community, God, that wants to see this town thrive and do wonderful things. I think that's evident for all the people that are here today. And I pray, God, that we can get behind one unit, God, and understand that we want to make this town a town that our kids can be proud of. Continue to watch over us, and as we get ready to look at Thanksgiving this week, God, I just pray that you give us reasons to be thankful for. One super important reason, God, is your Son, Jesus Christ. It's in his name that we pray, and all God's people say it.
Amen.
You guys in the head, Sam?
I'm just here to see who's been out of your house.
First off, I understand my post was controversial. But I also knew what I had to say and the way I had to say it to get you here tonight. What does it say about us when the only times we show up or watch is when you think the mayor is gonna make a fool of himself? You came here for gossip, but you're gonna leave with the truth. There are dark forces at work in our community. And if we don't unite right now, behind a common goal, this city will fail. And if you think the flood was bad, wait until you see what's coming our way. It will have far worse consequences. But there's still hope. If we don't act right here tonight, then we will surely continue to fail. But I'm not gonna let that happen. Tonight, we save Falmouth. And before I get into the details of what's happening and how I plan to fix it, let me tell you this. I know my post sounded a little crazy. But the only thing crazy about it is that it's all true. I have evidence to support it. I released a little bit to the public already, and more will come out. Real investigative journalists are on it. KRS 620 requires all allegations of child abuse to be reported to the authorities. Kentucky State Police, Child Protective Services. It is all our duty to do so. And failure to report is a crime. To all the parents, the children, and yes, even the teachers that called me and told me what's happening in our schools, I'm here for you. And I will not let this go until justice is served. And it comes from the top. It always does. And I never thought I'd say something like this, but we need a local teachers' union so that good teachers have protection from retaliation. There are teachers that are afraid. There are parents that are afraid. There are children that go to our school every day with anxiety infecting their minds. They feel abandoned. What a terrible thing to teach our most impressionable young adults. Major changes will be coming to our school system while I'm in office. We need to look after our children. We need to give them every opportunity to be successful and wise and safe. They will be the ones taking care of all of us before you know it. And I'm not gonna stand by, stay silent out of fear. Take back your schools. Show up. Only you can fix it, and I will help you. I work for no man. You can't buy me, you can't scare me. These same people that choose to investigate my life will turn a blind eye to both family and friends when they commit crimes. They failed to report these allegations of abuse in our school system. And if these people won't stand up for our children, then I will. Why do you think our Wildcats, our boys, our future leaders haven't won a football game in two years? That's what happens when you beat children down instead of building them up. And quiet resignation isn't enough. If I could lose my job at King Kate Laste Park for being a loudmouth Republican, then surely these people can be fired for assaulting our kids. And just like they illegally investigated magistrate Greg, they're doing the same to me right now. Magistrate Greg, I hope you have come to the realization that you have been misled. You have been lied to. I hope you regret voting to sue Falmouth. I hope you regret voting to get rid of dispatch. And I hope you regret passing up on a fire district. But don't show regret. Show courage. Stand up for the people that put you in office and do the right thing. Fight like hell for your people. Those brutes over there don't care about you. They don't care about the people who elected you either. They care about power. Take that power from them and give it back to the people. Undo this disaster that's quietly unfolding before us. And you all better be there to support him like you are me tonight. He's pretty fun to watch, too. But that's not why I'm here tonight. It's not why you're here. We're here to take action and demand results. And please, listen. If nothing else, understand that you have a mayor that is willing to do whatever is necessary to fix our broken community and help everyone in the process. And I'll be damned if I'm going to be silenced and threatened into submission by people who never donned the uniform and served their country. I have, and I will speak my mind. I will speak it loud. I will speak it proud. And I will continue to fight against all enemies, foreign and domestic. This is the situation we're in, and this is how we are going to fix it. The city of Falmouth, unlike any other city, owns and controls its own utilities, all of them. Everything except natural gas. And I'm surprised they haven't found a way to take over that as well. These departments are failing because of decades of mismanagement and turmoil. What do our previous mayors and council know about business? Do you think they're capable of running a multimillion-dollar corporation? No. They're too worried about status, drama, gossip, character assassinations, and innuendo. This is not a hierarchy. We are a meritocracy where merits and hard work is rewarded. We need to get back to that way of thinking, or it will continue to be left with this. It is why you always find yourself asking, how are they in charge? How is this incompetent fool running the show? It's because they scared away all the good people like you, like me. Take back your country. Take back your state. And before you can do that, you first have to take back your communities. Not with violence, but voices. Use your words. Don't be afraid to speak. How many times have you typed up a response and instead of hitting send, you hit backspace? Don't. Don't give them an inch. Don't be afraid to stand up and fight for what is right, even if you're standing alone. Because I promise you, you will inspire others to do the same, and you won't be standing alone for long. You're witnessing it right now. So what's the game plan? How can we fix it now? Our electric grid is crumbling. The last study we had done in 2013 called for millions of dollars in repairs and upgrades. And these issues didn't fix themselves over the last 10 years. Even though we have one of the most outdated systems in the country, Falmouth's electric rates are currently among the highest in the state. And if they aren't now, they will be when we have to increase our electric rate by 65% here in a few months to pay for a new transmission line coming into Falmouth. You don't see that paper though, do you? The plaster all over the front paint, the fact that the county is suing us to make me look bad. You didn't put a dollar amount on there, though, did you? Why? $8,000 is what they're suing us for. Doesn't get the same reaction out of people who put that in there, though, does it? And this is over interlocal agreements that ended on their own. One of them ended last year. Council voted to remove all those funds from the county when they approved the budget, not me. Why didn't they sue the previous mayor? Because he was their little bitch and covered for them.
I made a motion during the meeting.
No, it's wild, Mayor Stinson and Shannon Clam. Look him up. Stinson and Shannon Clam, look him up. Were able to go into the sheriff's office and steal evidence without so much as a whisper. Cover it up, just like they're trying to cover it up now. But let's sue Sebastian for saving the city money. The only reason they're doing that is to give these monsters the ammunition they need to remove me. Your mayor. But getting back to electric, we have, there's been no roll call. We have a failing grid. Getting back to electric, we have a failing grid. They don't want you to hear this. But beginning back to electric, we have a failing grid.
It's our meeting.
It's our meeting.
We're gonna keep order or I'm gonna clear this room and I've got the authority to do it and I will call the people here to do it.
So why don't you let them just speak?
I will finish. I'm gonna finish. It's wild, Mayor Stinson and Shannon Clam. Look him up. Were able to go into the sheriff's office and steal evidence without so much as a whisper. Cover it up. But let's sue Sebastian for saving the city money. The only reason they're doing that is to give these monsters the ammunition they need to remove me, your mayor. But getting back to electric, we have a failing grid and extremely high rates. You know who does it? Bluegrass. Owen. KU. We can sell them our grid, which is still worth millions, and use those funds to rebuild our city. Let's put our assets to work for us. Leave! I don't care! Let's put our assets to work for us. We can still apply a small tax to help run our administrative costs. I've already started the process. And like clockwork, these same people are trying to keep us in the electric business. That's not what the people want. Our grid is completely reliant on one person and he's likely retiring next year. Now is the time to get in front of this. Our water department. Is this resignations? I hope so. Water department. I know what I'm about to say is scary, but it's also true. We are drinking poison. Poison! There are chemicals in our river that our treatment facility isn't capable of removing. There is lead in our reservoirs that hold our drinking water. Look up P. Boss. Look up what it does to you.
Dark water.
Look up what lead does to you. The Roman Empire fell because they lined the aqueducts in lead and accidentally poisoned their people. Yes, something as simple as water quality can destroy communities. It can destroy empires. And we can fix this too. We can come together right now with Pendleton County Water, East Pendleton Water, Butler and Falmouth to build the most advanced, state-of-the-art water treatment facility that money can buy. Please don't miss the phones.
I'm sorry.
This will be owned by all of Pendleton County. So we don't have to buy water from Campbell County or Harrison County. We can buy it right here from Pendleton County and keep those good paying jobs here. And we can build it at the top of Reservoir Hill out of flood zone so that we are prepared. This will allow Falmouth to focus on distributions. We can replace these water lines, which should have been replaced decades ago. We can focus on fire hydrants, which are essential to our city's infrastructure and our safety. Trash. We have been losing money for decades on trash. And if you don't believe me, it's right here. I pointed this out five years ago. You're not gonna liar. I'm not lying. These people are. I have a bachelor's degree in business administration and accounting. You can't lie to me about numbers. I even pointed this out at a last meeting with a presentation and reports to back it up. No response I got? Let's just keep it. And leaf pickup is brought up as well for some reason. Leaf pickup has nothing to do with the trash department and will still be a city service we offer. These people will attempt to obfuscate and obstruct every step of the way. We can outsource the rumpie, which is where we take our trash anyways, and bring in over $50,000 a year that will go towards our city administration expenses. Sewer. Just to show you, I am a logical person and my answer to everything is not the same. We do need to keep our waste water treatment facility, but it needs a lot of work. We have broken lines all over town and it's dumping raw sewage into our rivers as we speak. The same river I grew up in as a child. This is unacceptable. Our sewer department is losing over $200,000 every year. And it's why, and it's been that way for as long as I could find. Why? You might be asking yourself, "How can the department lose money like this? Where does the money come from?" They take it from other departments. That's bad business. You don't rob from Peter to pay Paul. We do need to keep this department, but rates will have to go up so we can fix the problem. So we can prevent your basements from filling with sewage. The clerks department. The clerk's department costs around $305,000 a year. It's not revenue generating. So that's a complete loss. This department cannot go away. They are the ones running our city day in and day out and I appreciate them so much for all their help. This is why we will apply the applicable service taxes and fees to fund this department in its entirety. So that's the plan. And it will work. The only problem with this plan is that we didn't implement it sooner. And don't be fooled either. The flood did not destroy our community. It just washed away all the good and all the hope that came with it. But tonight, we will bring hope back to Falmouth. Couple of county issues I'd like to address. Dispatch. What does it say about us as a community that will turn our backs on the very people who were there in our hour of need? Who taught us through crisis? Seventeen jobs done away with. Seven of those full-time. For what? So the county can save $350,000 to $400,000? So they can start another volunteer fire department? Huge mistake. The county judge cost a taxpayer of this county well over $100,000 a year. How much of a pay cut did he take? None! County judge executives should be paid whatever the average income is of the county. That way they have an incentive to increase that number and keep jobs in their county. The fiscal court destroyed an institution we all loved. All because they didn't want to pay Falmouth a reasonable compensation for our fire protection services. Judge Fields, you came for their jobs and now we're all coming for yours. You have poor judgment, which is essential for a judge. You sue your own cities. You try to bully people into submission. You allow illegal background checks to be done on your magistrates you disagree with. Even though I disagree with the majority of my council, I would still fight for them if I saw them being taken advantage of. There's one thing I can't stand. And that's a bully. And the only way to defeat them when they hit you is to hit them back twice as hard. That unfortunately that is. Go ahead, people. This brings me to my last point. Our fire protection services. We do not need another volunteer fire department. We need a countywide fire district that encompasses all of Pendleton County, just like we do for ambulance service. This will give us the funds we need to set up a full-time, paid fire department. So that when our homes and our businesses catch fire, we aren't just showing up to put out the ashes. It doesn't matter how close you are to the firehouse if no one's there. We have had entire homes burned to the ground just blocks away from our fire department. Location is not the issue. Staffing is. And I'm willing to make a public offer to the county right now. I will sell you our fire department for a million dollars. It's worth more than that. Our breathing apparatuses alone are worth $300,000. Buy it and form the first countywide department. You have the ARPA funds to do so and it won't cost the county general fund a penny. And if you're too afraid to do it, then put it on the ballot and let the people decide what you're too spineless to do yourself. If we do these things, I promise you, we will succeed. You will see people flock back to their hometown when we can provide cheap utilities, the cleanest water you've ever drank, and emergency services worthy of the people we serve. This won't take decades either. It'll take a couple of years. And once we build a city worth protecting, I promise you this as well, I will get us the dam. I will get us the reservoir we need to protect our community from ever flooding again. We have the power to beat Mother Nature. God gave us that power. But it doesn't make it easy either. Good things never come easy. But if we can print and spend trillions of dollars overseas to protect other nations, all while enriching the political elite in this country, then surely we can find the necessary funds to protect our city in northern Kentucky forever. I want everyone to bow their heads one more time before we do God's work. Pay attention. Close your eyes. Hold your neighbor's hands. Your brothers, your sisters. These are not my words. These are the words of David, the warrior. When he spoke to our Creator. "O Lord, oppose those who oppose me. Fight those who fight against me. Put on your armor and take up your shield. Prepare for battle and come to my aid. Lift up your spear and javelin against those who pursue me." Let me hear you say, "I will give you victory. Bring shame and disgrace on those trying to kill me. Turn them back and humiliate those who want to harm me. Blow them away like chaff in the wind, a wind sent by the angel of the Lord. Make their path dark and slippery with the angel of the Lord pursuing them. I did them no wrong, but they laid a trap for me. I did them no wrong, but they dug a pit to catch me. So let sudden ruin come upon them. Let them be caught in the trap they set for me. Then I will rejoice in the Lord. I will be glad because he rescues me. With every bone in my body, I will praise him. Lord, who can compare with you? Who else rescues the helpless from the strong? Who else protects the helpless and the poor from those who rob them? Malicious witnesses testify against me. They accuse me of crimes I know nothing about. They repay me evil for good. And I am sick with despair. Yet when they were ill, I grieved for them. I denied myself by fasting for them. But my prayers return unanswered. I was sad as though they were my friends, my family, my teachers. As if I were grieving for my own mother. But they are glad now that I am in trouble. They gleefully join together against me, against you. I am attacked by people I don't even know. They slander me constantly. They mock me and call me names. They snarl at me. How long, oh Lord, will you look on and do nothing? Rescue me from their fierce attacks. Protect my life from these lions. Then I will thank you in front of the great assembly. I will praise you before all the people. Don't let my treacherous enemies rejoice over my defeat. Don't let those who hate me without cause gloat over my sorrow. They don't talk of peace. They plot against innocent people who mind their own business and they shout, "Aha, aha, with our own eyes, we saw him do it." Oh Lord, you know all about this. Do not stay silent. Do not abandon me now. Wake up. Rise to my defense. Take out my case, my God and my Lord. Declare me not guilty for you give justice. Don't let my enemies laugh about me and my troubles. Don't let them say, "Look, we got what we wanted. Now we'll eat him alive." May those who rejoice at my troubles be humiliated and disgraced. May those who triumph over me be covered with shame and dishonor. But give great joy to those who come to my defense. Let them continually say, "Great is the Lord, who delights and blesses his servants with peace." Then I will proclaim your justice and I will praise your name all day long. And the people said?
Amen.
I got a lot of honor agenda tonight. Well, I guess we're skipping that, right? Tonight, I was trying to sell 7.5 acres of the Clean Farm for $50,000. I was trying to sell the remaining portion of the Clean Farm for $200,000. Tonight, we could have brought in a quarter of a million dollars, but they walk away. They abandon you when you show up. Never have people showed up like this. And you did tonight. And they abandoned you. They walked away because they didn't want to hear the truth.
It had nothing to do with hearing the truth.
Keep showing up. Keep showing up. Please take her out. Next. You're disturbing the government process. There's time to speak.
You talk about not bullying, but you threaten someone in another.
Next. We're gonna purchase the lot downtown. That lot, that empty lot across the street, and I was gonna build it into the beautiful town center that it deserves to be. Also, I was gonna have them. Next, I was gonna have economic development fund restrictions that they put on the fund that I created to rebuild this city. And last, I was gonna try to outsource gardening, which would save us thousands, tens of thousands every year. I was also gonna try getting a first reading tonight of renaming State Street to Wyatt's Way in support and recognition of the Wyatt's family and what they've done for our city. I also had to approve some minutes and get some announcements here for you all as well. November 27th is the last month, last Monday of the month for large trash pickup. November 23rd and 24th is Seahawk's Club. November 2nd is our Christmas, Christmas festival downtown. Please come. I promise it'll be more exciting, more fun. December 5th is our next caucus meeting. And December 8th is our employee Christmas dinner.
Yes, that'll be a good one.
Christmas! And I also have one last thing. I want to thank you all for coming tonight. I want everyone here, and yes, you watching at home as well, to know that you have more power than you know. One voice, like Charlie Chaplin, can change the course of history. And if politics is too much for you, then at least find a church, find love in your community. And when it gets hard, and I promise you it will, keep fighting. It doesn't matter who the president is. It doesn't matter who our governor is. What matters in this country is local government. Our founders crafted it this way for a reason. So we can experiment and see what works and what doesn't. We need to take power back from Washington DC, back from Frankfort, Kentucky, and give it back to the people. So they can determine what goes on in their hometown. With centralized power comes centralized corruption. Take that power back. Get rid of the bureaucracy that's strangling our nation. Unelected brutes who care more about their job and climbing the ladder of hierarchy than serving the country that employs them. This nation was not built from the top down. It was built from the ground up. I don't care what party you are. I think you can all get behind the idea that if we can't fix the problems in our own backyard, we have no chance of saving this great nation. The barbarians are at the gates. The water is poisoned. The political elite are in turmoil. This is what caused the fall of Rome. And if it can happen to them, then it can happen to us. Don't let it happen. Unite. Quick story about Benjamin Franklin. After he and the other founding fathers emerged from their fall after signing the Constitution of the United States, this book, right here. As he emerged, a woman asked, "What did you give us?" "What did you give us? A republic or a monarchy?" And he replied, "A republic, madam, if you can keep it." Let's keep it. God bless all of you. I mean that. I hope each of you has a relationship with God. I know people in the church can seem a little crazy, right? But we're all a little crazy sometimes. But just because it's crazy, doesn't mean it's not true. Get involved. Speak up. And let's make this life a wonderful adventure together. And one last thing. And I have to say this because I promised my best friend I would, and I do not break promises. If you took nothing else away from this evening, remember this. Don't ever fuck with a Marine. Any questions outside? Susan? We have enough for the new house, so I guess you guys are free to go home. September 5. Always available. And I'll talk to you all as long as you need out in these chambers. If you have questions for me, I will answer them. I will give you as much time as I have.
Sebastian, I feel like the assistant should speak.
Yes, there is time for public comments, so anybody assigned, please come up and address the assembly.
Castle, I am running. Thank you for taking her out. I'm everybody. My name is Zachary Super. I'm a volunteer for the Ohio Youth Advisory Board. I give back to the community in numerous ways, not just this community, but in southwest region of Ohio where I grew up. Honey foster youth who aging out of foster care are at a major disadvantage. And so every year I give donations of multitudes of gift cards. This year I gave $1,000 in gift cards to foster youth and alumni aging out of assistance since I left this year. And all of my life, I've been devoted to service work. I've been a Boy Scout. And I mean that in the literal sense. I was in Boy Scouts all of my life growing up. And all of my life, I have never been convicted of a crime. I have never, you know, I'm a goody-two-shoes to the core. And it was never until I moved down here to stay with my fiancee Skylar Ward that I was charged with a crime where a gun was planted on me from one of the officers of the Pendleton County Sheriff's Office. I went to the office to file a complaint, and they gave me a piece of computer paper like this. Not a formal complaint form, a piece of computer paper to file a complaint, which was then tossed away. I asked for a copy of the police report, and I was threatened by Jared Brewer that I would be going to prison if I called back to the sheriff's office again. I have a recording of that phone call here. Because it's just, it's out of hand. I've never experienced this kind of behavior in my entire life. Hang on, it's right here. He also lied to me and said that one deputy was never in office during business hours. And there was another recording. It was a little bit longer. But I have a recording of just being threatened. Like, I'm just a citizen here. I'm being threatened because of my public rights. Freedom of Information Act. If any of you are not aware, Freedom of Information Act is a federal law that's in place that lets you all have the ability to file a form online or in person or in the courthouse, whatever it is, to know information about employment in the community. So for example, a judge's salary, you can get it with Freedom of Information Act. You have the right to know how many police departments a particular officer has been fired from, what departments they were from. And, you know, I attempted to file these lawyer requests and continually got denied by Stacy Sandy, the prosecutor, who is now threatening my family and to take my daughter away from our family. And this is just, it's, I, there was an aggressive act made by Eric Lightfoot, the county attorney, towards my fiancee with finger guns pointed at her. And it's just, it's out of hand. And I just, I'm on trial now for federally indicted for assault on a police officer. That police officer is here today. But, and want endangerment of my daughter in the first degree, which is basically attempted murder, which I have never laid my hands on a child. And the people that are laying their hands on children, slamming people on the ground in a high school, are not facing any charges whatsoever. The people that stand up for our community and do the right thing and stand up for their own rights are the ones who are attacked, and this needs to end now.
Tony Johnson.
I have to go up here. I'm here basically just to speak in support of our mayor, the plan he's laid out for our city. I've eagerly and passionately listened to what Sebastian has been saying for years. It's never changed over the course of the last five years. I did my own research. I attended many meetings, asked many questions, listened with a very open mind because I knew nothing about city politics. Our mayor is many things. He is a loudmouth. He's unapologetic. He's a business owner, a father, a husband, and a military vet. And he fights against bullying and corruption. He does the things sometimes that I even question him doing. But he's never steered me wrong or lied to me. Some of the lies that I've heard have been right here in these chambers from behind that desk right there. The people sitting there are supposed to be representing us, the people. Of course, there's no counseling here, but my question, my, my speech had in it that I wanted to ask them to take their positions of representing us more earnestly, follow the laws, and allocate for you, maintain, in order to maintain their seats. Show a compromise like they have previous mayors instead of just going against Sebastian. I've attended many meetings even prior to the mayor becoming mayor, where he was the only one sitting up there that voted no on something because he didn't go just with the flow like everyone else. Recently, I was in a meeting here, and they rejected his plan with the garbage with absolutely no reasoning. They just said no. So I, for one, can say that I am glad we have a mayor willing to work for the people. One who will stand up to bullies, corruption, haters, and fight for what he believes is right. Although at times he may feel like he's alone. I remind you, Sebastian, you're never alone. Tonight, you're not alone. You have many in this city and this county behind you. Falmouth is the county seat for Pendleton County, and we should represent that. I just want to say publicly, how I became the no, Sebastian, was because he knocked on my door of my home. That's how I him. He showed me courage, conviction. Most importantly, he has shown me confidence, confidence in himself, confidence in this city, and confidence in we, the people.
We, the people.
Absolutely. I may be biased because I'm a Marine, my mom. And he reminds me of my son. But this is what they're taught to do, and this is what we should do. Stand up for ourselves and unite.
Kayla Darnell?
The way I see it, we are all supposed to be able to unite under the belief that Falmouth is worth saving. Differing opinions about how it is saved are welcome and necessary. We need discussion and debate. We need to ensure that we select the best course of action that utilizes our limited resources in an ideal manner. The problems arise when we have people who look at Falmouth and decide that it is not important. Those who decided that it should have been abandoned in 97 and therefore will not input any extra effort. If it takes any additional work, they will not contribute. The way things have been is the way they should stay. That mentality will not improve with Falmouth. I am raising a banner beside my earth in believing that Falmouth is worthy of effort. Falmouth is deserving of life and all the combat that is required to keep it. I am calling on our businesses, our churches, all of us community members to unite, to fight division, corruption, and stagnation. To put forth some extra effort. It won't be easy, and it will take time. But if we unite, it can be done. Sebastian has many faults, just like I do, just like each one of you. We are all human. No one is perfect. I am not here to judge hearts, and this is especially directed towards city council. I'm not here to judge hearts. That is not something I am capable of or should ever do. I am biblically permitted by Matthew, Chapter 7, verses 16 through 20, and Chapter 12, verses 33 through 37, to judge fruit produced by a person's life and evaluate whether that fruit is something I should permit to continue being around me to support and encourage or to call out and reject. Yes, Sebastian is angry right now. He is frustrated, and frankly, so am I. I look at this panel, but disappeared, and I see a lot of adults that are behaving very selfishly and childishly. Most grownups would have stayed and listened. Instead, they walked out. I see fruit that needs to be thrown out. I said this at the budget meeting, and I will say it again. If the old ways worked so wonderfully, why are our roads crumbling? They didn't get that way within the last year. Why did the fire hydrants not work when they were needed? Chapel Street, that one had a dead fire hydrant. What if that had been your house? Sebastian wasn't there then. Why are no businesses, why were there no businesses beginning then? Why were so many businesses closing? Why were the sewers, why are the sewers backing up into people's houses? That didn't happen within the last year. Sebastian was one voice in the last five years that I've lived here who was calling out the old ways and saying, "This isn't working." But it was not until this year with him in charge that things changed. I never heard of or saw road repair until this year. I never saw abandoned buildings being addressed until Sebastian became mayor. I never saw growth of any kind. Just this past year has not shown up, and without growth, there is death. If the old ways and the old council members were so wonderful and so perfect, what happened? What happened? Yes, COVID was a setback. However, certain industries were permitted to continue. Our roads continued to be worked on. I-75, 275, they never had construction stop. What happened to ours? Emergency services didn't stop anywhere else. Fire hydrants worked in every other city. And as a side note, if COVID shut so much down, why didn't we have a surplus for those two years? We could have used that surplus on the bigger projects if things were shut down and wasn't being spent. Where has the money gone in these last five years? If it went to the county, what good did that do to our city? How did the county use it? They didn't improve infrastructure. They didn't help Pendleton County grow very much. The crime rates were not addressed, and in fact, it kind of sounds like it was hidden anymore. I see a vast majority of rotten fruit performed. I look to the Bible to shape my worldview. My life revolves around the scriptures, which ticks off a lot of people, it's often recorded wrongly. And how dare I base my life upon the word of God and hold others accountable to it. But regardless, looking through the Bible, the only times I see people getting angry about a city being built or scripture being used to address improper behavior was when they were opposing God. All through the book of Nehemiah, he is building up Jerusalem, and the surrounding nations are threatening him, searching for some crimes that they can accuse him of, telling him to stop and come down from his work. And each time Nehemiah answered back with the word of God, he knew what his job was, and he stuck to it. Then in Matthew and the other Gospels, Jesus uses the scriptures to address the behavior of the Pharisees and point out where they are wrong, and it sends them into such a fury, they seek to kill him. Now, I'm not accusing the council or anyone else of being Pharisees, nor am I accusing anyone of being un-Christian. Like I said, I can't judge your heart. That's not my job. I am simply pointing out a lot of rotten fruit and refusing to ignore it any longer. It's time to take out some crap.
Magistrate? I want to speak now. Jeff Carson. Last, but certainly not least, magistrate Darrell.
I'll tell you what, I don't want to word start. But I do want to let you all know that I, as your magistrate in Pendleton County, District 3, I do represent the whole county, and I want you to know that. The relationship I have with the mayor is a good relationship. The relationship I have with Darrell is a good relationship. I know all these people sitting up here, the sheriff's department, the police department. Don't know that gentleman back there behind the camera. Maybe I can get to know him before he leaves, but, you know, I like unity. I want to see unity in Falmouth and the county. Believe me, I do. But I want to address a couple of things that the mayor mentioned. It's not to want to go outside and throw rocks at each other. It's just I want to address it and let you know. The first thing I want to address is dispatch 911. Last week, I amended the agenda, and I made a motion to keep 911 in Pendleton County. Why? 2,100 kids in this school system. I drive a school bus also. I do a little bit of everything. It's the largest employer in the county. I can look you guys straight dead in the eye and say, "I failed." That's why I wanted to bring it back. Am I mad at everybody up there? Absolutely not. They have their right to do their thing. I don't begrudge them. There's 34 buses on that road every day. I'm one of them. Yeah, the news media made it look like all we have is cows out down here. Well, I got cows too. And I don't want you hitting my cows because I'm going to have to pay for it. So as a courtesy, bus drivers will call dispatch to let them know about cows. Well, I'm not more worried about a cow than I am them 2,100 kids. We owe it to that generation to keep 911. Where will that money go? I haven't found out yet. I'm assuming right now it will go into the general fund. It goes into the general fund. We can buy marbles with it. They're going to have to tell me what, where that money is going to go that they're saving. The second thing I want to talk about is the fire department. I went to a conference last week in Lexington with Kentucky Magistrates and Commissioners Association. And they have, it's a big deal. I mean, there's people everywhere. And they got these aisles set up with people, the magistrates and commissioners and judges can all walk around with a bag and we get to steal all the goodies from the Easter egg basket, you know? I love them little clips you can put on the tater chip. Well, I run into fire commission, state fire rescue training. I run into one of the state fire commissioners. Am I against the fire department? Absolutely not. I'm not. If this county needs a fire department, an extra one, I'm not against it. I asked this guy right here. I said, how much is it going to cost us? He said, Darren called me next Friday. Next Friday, he ain't got here yet. Darren's going to call him. I'm going to drive to Paris, Kentucky if I have to, to find out that it's really true that one person suited up to go inside of a fire, $12,000. That's just off the top of that man's head. One. We don't have property for, the county will have to buy property. Guys, you all don't know how mad I'm going to be hated tonight, but that's okay. We're going to have to buy property. Then we're going to have to build one. Guys, I have been confronted and talked to with different people. Not every one of the council members. I've talked to the mayor. Guys, that's my job to find out this information. You're looking five, probably five to three million dollars to get everything ready to go and go put out a fire. We got one sitting right over here. Ready to go. And they said it could possibly be sold. Okay? You want to put a fire department in the, in the, in the community where it's mostly populated? Bing, there it is. Oh, well, it's in the flood zone. We know what? When it starts raining, get the truck out. Then when it's over with, we'll fill the fire truck up with water. We'll come down here and work it out. It's concrete floor and walls and a whole nine yards. I don't want to spend, guys, your dollars, my dollars, three, four, five million dollars. I don't have the figure yet, but it's over a million. Do I want to give the city a million dollars for it? Maybe we can work down to 500,000 or 750,000. It's, maybe we can negotiate. We can try anyway.
That's the bottom dollar.
Hey, we're back to arm wrestling. But yeah, that's the deal with the fire department. And now the info about the, what was you talking about all ago? I wrote a note down here about suing the city. Okay? After the fact, I find out afterwards that that stuff had never been put into DLG.
What's DLT?
Department of Local Government has to approve any, any local agreement between two government agencies.
Play them big old five dollars.
Will you have any contract between two government agencies?
Somebody didn't do their job. Somebody didn't. Now, another thing I want to defend myself for. Like I say, guys, I get along with you. You know, I think of politics as refereeing sometimes. You guys like, you're referees, you know what I mean? I referee. I've been refereeing for over 20 years. You know, when you first walk into that game and all the parents are walking in, they see you with that black and white shirt on. Well, hey there, Darren. How you doing, old buddy? That's what they do. You know, then when you foul their kid out, or you tee their coach up, or tee a kid up, then they hate you.
Then we cuss you like a dog.
Cuss me like a dog, yeah. All right, bye. A little over a year ago, I was, I drive a city garbage truck to family. Well, three years ago, they didn't have a CDL driver. I've got a class. I have my tanker doubles, triple passenger and school bus. So I was confronted when I, I didn't think this would last for three years, you guys. I really didn't. I said, yeah, I said, I could do this in my part of town. You know, you get a CDL driver and you want him to do it, that's fine. Well, on a Wednesday route out of Cardinal Ridge, I'm not going to tell nobody's name because I'm just not. We're throwing garbage out there. Didn't know I was garbage, man, did you? I found a bag of dope, guys. It's got the dope pipes. It's got the dope. It's got it all in there. Big old bag of it. Well, we hit jackpot, didn't we? No, we didn't hit the jackpot. We took it down to the sheriff's office. Now, I will say this. It was the past administration. It was not the administration we have in there now. I take the bag out of the truck. Guys, I'm just trying to do what's right. I take it in there. Here you go. I wrote down, I think, a statement or something to that effect and did my due diligence. I said, guys, you all got this taken care of. Yeah. Well, I said, I got to finish this route to the city of Falmouth. I left, finished the route. Couple of days later, a TLO was run on me. A TLO, I don't know what the abbreviation of it is now, but it's, and a lawyer right here apparently, if I'm wrong. You don't run a TLO on you unless there is an open investigation on you. This is just what I was told. So I'm kind of speculating here. Well, the TLO is to say, who's this guy's kids? Who's this guy's mother and daddy? Who's this guy's brothers and sisters? Where's this guy live? Well, you know, it ain't none of his business where I live. I lost all my guns in a boat accident. So, you know, there you go. But it's illegal to do that. And Pendleton County Sheriff's Office ran the TLO on me. And then they sent me a letter telling me what they did. To cover, maybe to cover their butt? I don't know. I don't know. I just. Should I come here tonight, guys? I left my meeting across the street for this. Did, you know, I've got all the information from tonight over there that I need to. And this week I'll sit and finish reading everything I need to read. And if I got any questions, I'll call the judge or one of my magistrate friends.
Well, you're just like Sebastian then.
You know, I want what's right in the city. Hey, this is my city too. I don't care if I live out of comfort. Guys, I'm born and bred here. Right here. 54 years I've been here. Young guy mcGrady lot out there. Turn around. So I appreciate you all listening to me dabble. And I did get a message tonight on my cell phone that, and I want to congratulate the newest brother in Christ that I know.
Thank you all again for coming.
I just want to say that I'm back.
Don't make me not sign out.
It's, guess what? It's not a meeting.
It is a meeting.
No, it's not.
You covered up abuse in our, we actually have to, you covered up sexual abuse of our employees. And I'll put that out there now since you want to shit here and speak up. Leave.
Please do.
I want to show up for the meetings. This is what we got to deal with.
It was not.
Keep not showing up.
And he knows it was investigated by Kentucky League of Cities and the police. So I don't know.
We'll take it back. Our city, we'll take it back. These people, people, these people. I'll probably got people she was. I got all the documents too. Smoke up. You shouldn't be quiet. Thank you all. If you have questions for me, I'll be out the hall and I'll answer all of them for you. I'll give you all night if you have questions for me.